Yes. Charlie, yeah. Hello, Charlie. We're recording?
We are recording.
Brett, are you good? Thank you. All right, it is 7:36 and we are back in open session. Moving on to item number five. It was four visually, but now it's five, right? Conduct interviews for vacant council positions. So, we want to thank everyone that's here to be interviewed. We greatly appreciate your interest in this unexpired council seat. We want you to be comfortable tonight. And if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to ask. Councilman Chuha and myself and Councilman Blackley have gone through exactly what you're going through tonight. We sat probably in the same seats that you're sitting in. And we know it's not easy. And I can, what I do recall for sure is that when Councilman Chuha and I went through it, we were not selected. So know that tonight is not the end of the road if you're not chosen by council.
So, I mean, I was, went through it twice. I was chosen the first time, but not the second. So the remedy to that then is you run for the seat.
You run, exactly correct. Just a note of interest that we do have an opening on our Parks and Rec Board as of today or yesterday, I forget when that happened. So potentially you might, once again, if you're not chosen tonight, might look at that as an opportunity to get involved if you're not in some other capacity. Okay, so I have all of your names in a hat that has the Chardon logo on it. This is from 1010 Design. And I'm going to ask Amy Day to withdraw. This is for the order of interview. With one exception is that we did have Mark Purchase, who's one of the, Mark's not here, correct? No. Due to his schedule and due to our rescheduling, he was not able to be here right away. He just said if we wouldn't mind putting him last. So hopefully you're okay with that. That's what we decided to do. But at this point, we're going to draw names and you'll know your order of. So this will be interview number one that Amy's choosing here.
Casey.
Casey, Fishen, Fishen?
Very good.
Good, okay.
Colin wants.
Okay. Colin, you're two.
Victoria wants.
Victoria, you are three.
Molly.
Molly, you're four.
Kyle.
Kyle, five. And Madeline, that makes you six. And Mark will be seven. So, okay. So, we have down the hallway, the, outside of the court, there's a waiting room. And what we're going to do is respectively ask you to locate yourselves down there until your turn is called. And we're keeping this to 15 minutes per interview. Or shorter. Clearly, if we're in the throes of some deep issue and 15 minutes comes up, we'll let it go to a respectable amount of time, but we need to keep things moving. So, all right, so thank you. You guys can.
And also, you're welcome to stay, you know, for the duration until a decision is made. A decision will be made tonight, correct?
After all the interviews, we will be going back into executive session to discuss and coming back with a decision that's correct.
You don't have to. You can tune into GTV and watch. It's up to you. The swearing in would not be until the third, correct?
Not the third.
Special session?
Oh, yeah. Yes?
On February 3rd, we have a special session.
So the appointment, Ben, are you listening?
Sir.
The appointment could be made this evening, but the swearing in would be okay to wait until the third?
Oh, there you go.
You can do the swearing in today if you want. When we've got the oath and you have elected officials here, you can do the swearing in.
We want to have them have the opportunity to have their families here if they wanted to.
Nice, Ben.
Or we could do both, like we've done before.
All right. Anything else? No? 15 minutes and, right?
I just want to make sure the lights are on over there.
Randy will show you where to sit and.
There's water and coffee in there, too.
Oh, is there? Thanks, Amy. Good, how are you?
Is it good coffee? Is it like high-dollar coffee or is it like?
Thank you, sir.
Government coffee.
You can have a seat right there in the center there. Yeah, would you run the timer? Will an alarm go off?
Well, I mean, I can.
Okay. Casey, once again, thanks for your interest. And what I do is, I have four questions, but we'd like to just give you a brief amount of time to introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in this position.
Very good, thank you. Thank you all for having me and for entertaining my letter to join council. Congratulations, Mayor, on your appointment.
Thank you.
So why I would be interested in this opportunity is first and foremost to give back to the citizens of the city of Chardon. One cannot complain about issues that face them on a daily basis if they're not willing to get in the trenches and fix issues and lend themselves to whatever they can to participate. So, that's the primary reason I saw the opportunity. I currently serve on the Audit Committee with the city of Chardon, so I'm already one foot in the door and love my town and love my people.
Wonderful. So do we. The question, the first one I have, over the last few years, what city issues have you paid attention to and why?
Over the last how many years? I'm sorry?
Last few years.
Budget issues, impacts, lingering impacts of COVID-19. You know, how will that impact our economy? The financial management? And as a healthcare professional, I'm curious to see how the Johnson &amp; Johnson settlement, the class action settlement will come into play and how those finances will be used. I know with the levy from this past fall, you know, the revenue that came in from that will be interesting to see how that will be applied and used going forward. The grants and loans and bonds and just how we're using our finances for the betterment of the community.
What do you think council's role is here in Chardon?
Well, with any city council, it's the full life cycle of a business, if you will. Don't want to look at the city as a business only, but one has to consider acquisitions and growth and budgets and how everything comes into play. And just how I can, I'll be able to contribute to that with my experience. And working together, you know, if, I feel that one of the main things I would bring to the council is my ability to communicate and listen and understand and meet people where they are and sometimes have to say no and sometimes enjoy the thrill of saying yes. That's a fantastic idea. Or not understanding where people may be coming from and then come together as a group and pull out everything that everybody has to offer to the city and the citizens from the vast backgrounds that we as a group can offer to our people. And understand and ask the questions, like, I don't understand that, can you please elaborate? And that's very interesting, can you give me more information on that? I would like to educate myself and, you know, understand and really communicate back, let people know that they're heard and that they're understood. And then, you know, implement changes that may be necessary. But all the while preserving the phenomenal history that this, the city has. Because the historic background of the city is what our city council underlyingly has to preserve while we move forward in progression and change and development at the same time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, there was an election last, this last fall, and you didn't decide to run at that point. What was the change? Why did you decide to do this tonight instead of run back in the fall?
I would say with everything going on in the world currently, trying to do the work balance, the family balance, the business balance and devote all the time that I had to for the previous year to all of my business connections, my family and everything that I had going on at the time. And the time commitment and everything that goes into running, I felt at that time, it may not have been ideal. And then when I saw this opportunity, I literally did a double take and I said, I have, we can make the time. The campaign piece has been removed and so I get to just campaign in front of you wonderful people tonight and I can fit that into my schedule. And I can certainly devote all the time necessary going forward to give the opportunity of my full attention.
Yeah, campaigning's not a lot of fun, so. If elected, if you're appointed to this term, would you plan on running again in two years for the four-year term?
Absolutely. I want to continue this. So the background that I bring is so vast and diverse and I feel that I have so many different pieces to offer our city. I've got 27 years of healthcare administration experience. I've built six companies from the ground up, from development to marketing, sales, websites, to the sale of the companies, the businesses. This is not short-term for me. This was just a small opportunity I saw and I'm already, you know, involved with the auditing and the committee that way. I've served so many large corporations. The American Quarter Horse Association has its own zip code in Amarillo, Texas, and I was on the committee for the professional, the professional horsemen for that committee from the ground up. I volunteer and the webmaster for my running club, Northeast Running Club. But more so, I found myself full circle. So, would I run again? Absolutely, because I'm at the point in my life where, you know, you pay your dues going through your professional career. I graduated with a clinical psychology degree in minors in IT and English. And so it's just this very strange, vast background that I bring. And I want to continue to find a way to plug into the town. I'm a licensed real estate agent, so I've got all of the legal contracting and the laws with real estate and zoning and everything else. But on the other side, I want to continue to serve past just this term because I've got literally the full life cycle of business. Grants, OSHA, HIPAA, policies, compliance, operations, revenue expenditures. Every aspect that a business can have, I've got 27 years' background in it. So I really want to try to give back as long as I can. And if, now I'm a clinical business analyst for Rite Aid, which is a $280 million corporation. And I find myself getting different wins. You know, in the years growing up and establishing a career in business in which direction you're going to go, you get to, you get to understand and see the backend of things. But now I'm kind of around the corner and instead of training horses and showing, and I've had multiple top five in the nation, now I'm going to be participating and giving back as a judge. So the same thing, I find myself, I'm a mother of seven. We've got six that we raised just off the square, four in the public school systems. My son, little mom, was the center of our great football team, who was a two-time state champion. So we're highly inserted and devoted to the city of Chardon. But I find myself at this point in my career on a lot of levels of just giving back in different ways. I'm a sports agent. I help kids get onto D1 athletic programs through their equestrian programs. Instead of training and going different ways, I'm coming around and finding niches at this point in my life where it's just fun. You've got so much experience to draw from and so many new people to meet and work together and give back. And my background is so diverse and unique that one of my favorite jobs was delivering flowers when I was a kid. Because nobody's ever afraid to, you know, they're always happy to see the flower delivery person. Well, now I want to, I've owned other companies and businesses and developed them, and now I want to find different ways to make people smile and hear them out and meet them where they are.
Very good. Just want to give council a chance to ask any other questions that have not been asked tonight already.
Just throw out, what do you, what do you see as the biggest issue facing Chardon today?
The biggest issue?
In your opinion, yes.
As much as I don't want to dwell on the pandemic, it's hard to ignore. So I really am going to be very interested and inserted into the lingering impacts from COVID-19. And I don't think we're separate from anybody else on the globe right now to recover and manage the negative impacts on that. So as much as I'd like to doldle it down and let it be something more specific to Chardon, I think it's hard to ignore those impacts.
Let me just say, I was thinking more in terms, I mean, what realistically we could do as a city government. Now, our ability to do anything about COVID-19 is fairly limited. But are you, within the ability of city council to influence people's lives within the city, is that, would that still be your answer?
That would be something I would look to the council to educate me on. And I would like to, you know, I've read the reports, I've got the audit reports, I've got the budgets. I've, you know, we're a $19 million general fund city and I would want to learn as much as I could about that and then, and then see how I can insert myself and lend any ideas and brainstorming that I possibly could.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? No? Good. You have any questions for us?
I do. Just out of curiosity, what does the economic development planning in the retail strategies look like for 2022? You notice a lot of vacant places and buildings and spots that could be generating revenue. Just curious what that looks like developmentally wise in 2022.
It's a big, big topic, but there's always, always interest in helping the way we can. I know Steve Yeney and Heather is on the Economic Development Committee, is present, but that'll change. Actually, we know you're off of there.
I'm still on it.
Still on it.
So we hired a company because Chardon doesn't have a specific economic development department. We have Steve Yeney, who responds to inquiries, but Steve has a pretty broad, like, he has a lot of responsibilities. So we hired retail strategies to help us try and develop, try to help us fill the spaces that were open and help us understand our demographics and get metrics on that we could help provide to, like, our commercial real estate folks who work with the city. And so that was like one of the first steps that we took to try to start having, we have a robust residential development going on in the city, but not our, it's more challenging with commercial development. And trying to bring together business, our building owners, property and land owners and that kind of thing, too. So that is definitely a work in progress.
That's what I've seen with the Thistle Creek and the Redwood Apartments you're referring to.
Yes.
They seem like those are going to be really great for the town.
Yeah.
And that's why it kind of triggered the corporate side of that. What are we doing with these open spaces that we see?
Right.
That have been dormant for so long.
Right. There's a lot of, there's a lot of energy or effort going towards trying to help that. That's, it's slow, it's a slow process.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's a great answer.
All right, just based on time considerations, I think we're going to say thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for being on Audit Committee, too.
Yes.
My pleasure.
And if you wouldn't mind telling Colin when you go out to.
Colin, okay. So I don't remember Colin's face, but there's, I'll just look in the way of the gentleman. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
It was nice to meet you.
Thank you.
One thing that Heather and I talked earlier this week about, by the time we get ready to go into executive session, if you all wouldn't mind coming in with a ranking of one, two, and three, based on everybody you're seeing tonight, your first selection, second selection, third selection. And then that'll kind of narrow our discussion points and complete aid our efforts. So, you're nodding the act there?
I was just general nodding.
Oh.
It's just general nodding.
Just don't nod off.
Thanks, Dad. I was so glad you included me last week still in the dad jokes. I was feeling a little.
How would I not? Welcome back, Colin. Come on in, have a seat right there in the.
Have a seat or stand?
Center court. Yeah, sit right there because the GTV camera's trained on that location.
Oh, is it?
That certainly helps. Welcome back, welcome back. I have some questions that I'll be asking, but why don't you just give us a quick overview of yourself and why this position interests you?
Background, let's see, grew up in Claritin Township, moved to the state of Chardon end of 2016. My wife and I bought our first house. Since then, fixed up the house and have two kids later. Really enjoyed ourselves here in Chardon, especially me growing up in township. I never had neighbors 10 feet away from me before, so learning experience, but really enjoy it, really enjoy my neighbors, too. But professional background, I have a degree in construction engineering from University of Akron. Graduated back in 2015. I work at an engineering consulting firm called the Manchin Smith Group. I've been there coming up on 12 years. Went through various groups at that company, started in surveying, went to site civil development as a CAD technician. Now Andy's probably very familiar with this stuff. And then went into their geotechnical and environmental group, mostly working at landfills and started getting into construction. And ultimately ended up in their construction division that they started up while I was there. And then five years, four years after graduation, I now lead that construction group for Northeast Ohio. My current role is that I lead a team of eight engineers and inspectors managing and administrating public projects, mostly. About 90% of my workload is public projects and public funding. So I have a decent background in managing projects with federal, state, and local funding sources, quite familiar with a lot of the funding sources and the criteria you have to follow to get that funding, from procuring it all the way through construction. While this position interests me, as some of you know, I've, early on when I moved here, I started to make an effort to try to get involved locally. I was attending council meetings for quite a while there back in, I think, 2018, I think. And then ultimately a spot on Planning Commission became available. And I applied for that and been on Planning Commission since 2019, I believe, end of 2019. So, I think that council would be the big leagues. I guess you would say it takes on a little bit more, a little bit more involved, and I'd like to get more involved and contribute more. I think Planning Commission is not only, I hope I've benefited Planning Commission, but it's also benefited me quite a bit. I've learned a lot, helps me, it's helped me grow professionally as well. Got to meet a lot of nice people, so really enjoyed it. But yeah, that's why this would interest me.
Very good. Over the past few years, this is probably going to pertain to planning, but what city issues have you paid attention to and why?
When I was attending the council meetings, when I first started doing that, one of the big items that came up was the waste management contract, which was very interesting. I really appreciated it, too, because it saved me a lot of money. That was a very interesting topic, I thought, because you put out for bids for it and it was going to be a citywide contract to lower rates. I get a, sometimes I get a little flack for the stop sign there on South Hamden Street. A lot of people outside the city don't appreciate it, but me being on South Hamden, I sure do. But can't really say I have too many other big topics that hit my list. Partaking in the developments that have come before Planning Commission was very enjoyable, being part of that process, seeing how they come through and, you know, what we can comment on and what we can request for, how they proceed with things when it impacts the city.
Colin, what do you think council's role is in the city?
I would think that it's more of an administrative role. You're representing the citizens and looking over the best interest of the city. That's about the shortest answer I can give. I think it's probably a lot more complicated than that, but.
No, we're okay with short answers.
So are they, in the back, too.
We had an election back in November and you didn't run then, you took some time and you decided to come for us tonight. What was the turning point for you in that decision-making?
For me, as you probably know, too, is that I submitted my letter almost to the last day, I think second to last day, for putting in my name for this. I did not necessarily have an interest in running for council, because I thought there's a lot of good candidates, I think there's a lot of good candidates out there. After I found out that there was a vacancy, I thought about it, talked it over with my wife and said, you know, put my name in and see what happens. Something that interests me is being part of a government body, but didn't consider it until there was a vacancy, frankly.
If appointed to this position, would you plan on running again in two years for the four-year commitment?
I don't have an answer for that because I think there's a lot of variables between now and then that would affect that decision.
Understood. Anybody else have any questions for Colin?
Well, that's the same question I asked the other, asked Casey. What do you see as the single most important issue facing Chardon today?
That's a tough question. Single most important issue?
So if you were elected, I mean, if you were in council, what's the overriding thing that you think we ought to be dealing with?
I think it all comes back to managing budgets and the operations, mostly, but I know city manager handles quite a bit of that on the day-to-day end. City council handles that from a broader perspective. I don't have a specific issue or real, I don't see anything that comes to mind like, wow, we really got to improve here or fix this. I think the city does a very good job, frankly, already. But that's a good enough answer.
It's a bad answer, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Do you have any questions for us, Colin?
Uh, no, not at this time. Keep it short.
Okay. All right, well, we appreciate you once again. And if you wouldn't mind, when you go back into the other room, letting Victoria and Nicholas know that her turn is up.
Well, do.
I just want to thank you for your service on Planning Commission. It's been very valuable and I do very much appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
I've enjoyed it quite a bit, frankly. I've enjoyed it quite a bit, frankly, so.
Thanks, Colin.
I think about that all the time. There's plenty.
What games you playing over there?
What if you get on and you don't like it? I would have said the same thing. I'm still saying the same thing.
Does anyone need any of the resumes? Anyone want to bring them?
Uh-uh. I got all.
Actually, I didn't bring them.
I have them.
Deb didn't bring them.
I even brought an extra.
Does Andy want a set?
Yeah, yeah, an extra.
Yeah.
I brought a set, too.
Welcome back, Victoria. Have a seat right there at the table.
All right.
How is everything out in the waiting room there? Okay?
Good, quiet.
Before I ask a few questions, we just give you an opportunity to, once again, introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in this position.
Okay. My name is Vicky Walker Nicholas. My grandfather's picture is upstairs with the volunteer fire department. My Uncle Tom McDonald used to be the postmaster for the Chardon Post Office. I was born and raised here, then I moved, spent time in Kingsville, Ohio, where I ran for the Buckeye Local School Board and served 16 years there. And we moved back here in 2005, and I've been a resident ever since. And I've always been interested in politics.
Very good. Vicky, I can call you Vicky, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Over the last few years, two, three, within that reign, what city issues have you paid attention to and why?
I've paid attention to a lot of the issues that affect the older retired folks, since I'm one of them. I think the taxes can sometimes be an issue. I also would like to see our city continue to move forward. I believe that Chardon is an excellent place to live, raise a family. It's home, and I really love the town.
Thank you. What do you think council's role is in the city?
To listen to the concerns of the constituents, bring those to all of the council members, to vote realistically on items that come before you. Once a vote is made, you have to stand by the decision whether you appreciated it or not.
That's true. So we had an election last November and you didn't run then. You've decided to try this out. What was the turning point for you as far as making the decision to apply to this unexpired term?
Well, I've always been interested in politics. My father was on city council in Chardon in 1960. And I thought that since there was an opening, I just threw my hat into the ring.
Would you, if you're appointed to this position, would you plan on running again in two years for the four-year term?
Certainly. God willing, I would.
Very good. Any other questions from council? Andy, you want to?
I'll just, yeah, I've been asking the same question. I noticed you saying in your resume that, you know, you think new blood is needed to continue the vision for, moving the vision forward for our city. What do you think is the single most important issue facing Chardon today? And that city council could, has the power to work to improve on?
I think the single most important issue facing us right now is fighting COVID, or one. And finances. You know, with prices are going up all over the place and I think we need to be careful how we spend our money, where it goes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have a follow-up question. You mentioned issues, impacts to retirees, and then you kind of specifically spoke about taxes. Can you help me with, is there a specific tax or what area were you referring to there?
Just all taxes, the city tax, and also the garbage. I was glad that we finally got one carrier, you know, instead of, and the senior citizens did get a discount. You know, I think the senior citizens deserve discounts on different things.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying. Vicky, do you have any questions for us?
What is the most pressing issue you feel the city of Chardon faces?
Well, we have a few, but right now we're trying to get a issue resolved with our county commissioners on making sure that their presence on our square primarily is maintained and enhanced. And that kind of coincides with all elements of financial improvement and additional retail restaurants being brought into the city and what we can do to increase that base. So that would be my answer. I don't know if someone else wants to chime in on something else, but those are, it's a big area for us right now.
Okay. And does the city give out to new residents a welcome packet that you know of?
It used to. I remember.
I was asked about that, too.
It was the welcome wagon.
It was right.
It wasn't actually a city entity.
Like a grassroots kind of neighborhood thing, but no. No.
Okay.
Andy, we might have a new committee for you. Good one.
Just an issue always is maintaining the vitality of the city, right? Maintaining the city services at a cost that we can afford.
Correct.
While not continuing to have escalating costs and trying to be as wise as we can, right, for how we spend. And recently, it's even been retaining and having employees, too, because I think that's more of a, not just a city, but that's everywhere. But it definitely has impacted the city.
Maintaining the city services to the high standard that we've come to expect and that keeps Chardon such a great place to raise a family. I think we all would agree on.
And I think the snow plowing of the sidewalk is especially appreciated. That's, that's an excellent perk.
We have that nice Canadian machine.
Do you have any other questions for us?
No.
Once again, thank you very much.
Okay.
For your kind comments and your participation tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And when you go back out into the waiting room, if you wouldn't mind letting Molly Hegner, she's the young lady out there, letting her know that she's next up.
Okay. I will let her know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't know our little plow was Canadian.
Bombardier.
Hey, I had no idea.
It is, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah. Made in Quebec.
Nobody says it that way.
They get a lot of snow in Quebec.
Have you ever been up to Quebec?
Not in the last two years.
I think you like to say Quebec.
That's how you say it.
Isn't it Quebec instead of Quebec?
I really think so.
The only thing I'm against Quebec, Quebec, is it's claiming to be the maple capital of the world. And of course, Canadians have a maple on their flag, so we think.
We don't have a maple on our flag.
Look over, it's like 2:39.
Welcome back, Molly. Am I correct in saying Terry is your dad?
Terry is my dad.
Just letting people, Terry was really involved with school for a long time on different fronts and got to know him pretty well. Molly, we have your information here and I'm going to ask you a few questions every once in a while. But just generally, you could just give us a background, a review of who you are and why this position interests you today.
Okay, yeah. I am like, I think, a fifth generation Chardenite. My family's always lived here. I grew up here. I bought my first home here two years ago. I live by myself with my dog. I graduated in 2018 from Ursula College with three degrees. I now work in search engine marketing with a brand called Fortune Brands. They own like Moen and Masterlock. Why do I want to be part of city council? I've been involved a lot with Chardon. Ever since the school shooting happened, I've tried to be involved in projects that contribute to the memorialization of that. I was a part of creating the mural that's now at the Chardon Living Memorial Park and I helped out with the 5K that helped fund that park. I've been parts of committees, presidents for different groups in college, and I always enjoyed it. I haven't really had a lot of opportunity to do that type of work since I graduated and I would love to continue doing it.
Oh, thank you. There's, yeah, you've done quite a bit on that front. That's great. Over the last few years, what city issues have you paid attention to and why?
One of the biggest ones probably been the opioid crisis. I went to school with a few people who overdosed and attended their funerals and realized how big of an issue it was for Chardon, even though we are so small. I think we've done really well with providing resources for people who are struggling, but I think there is still a really big struggle and we don't hear about it a lot. But, you know, it's seen. So that's, that's something I've noticed.
What do you think council's role is in the city?
Oh, gosh, I feel like they do so much. I don't know what a good answer is for this. Helping residents with concerns, making decisions on government funding, helping with grants. I feel like they just help, any citizen can come here with a concern and you can help address that concern.
Are you Mr. Purchase?
No.
Oh, that's my dad.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would have.
Apologize.
Yeah, good catch. Sorry, Andy, I recognized Terry when he came in. Good. All right. So we had an election back in November and you didn't run then. You made, between then and now, you've made the decision to approach council. What was, what was the deciding factor for you to come before us tonight?
I got a new job and I work from home and I love my job, but I have tons of flexibility with my position. I can work any hours I want to. And I felt like I had the bandwidth at this point in my life to contribute in this way.
Understood. If you were appointed to this position for the next two years, would you then run for office for the four-year term that would be after that?
If I enjoyed it, yes, I would continue doing it.
That's a strong maybe.
Yeah.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions for Molly?
Well, I've been asking the same question of the other people as well. What do you think is the single most important issue facing Chardon? And I have to qualify that, that can be dealt with by city council. So we can't fix the opioid crisis or COVID-19, but what are the things that you think that we should be fixing that maybe we aren't doing now?
I don't know if this.
We've been doing a great job on. You think we should keep on? What do you think is the most important issue that we're, that we're dealing with?
I don't know if it would fall under like COVID-19 and opioid, but one that like I think could be improved upon is mental health. I struggle to see resources for people dealing with mental health and I think that a city council could brainstorm and provide more resources for people than they have right now. The only places I really see it publicized a lot is through like the YMCA and stuff like that. But I think that the council has a really big voice and a wide reach in that sometimes people don't know where to look for help in those situations and that city council could help in that situation.
Anyone else on council have questions for Molly? No. Molly, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't think so.
All right. Well, once again, we appreciate you coming in. Proud of what you've done with, you know, some of your projects here and the, was that?
I said, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's great. That's really amazing.
Really well done. And you graduated with three degrees, is that?
Yes.
Better read that correctly and you restated that, so.
Yeah.
In three years?
Three years, yes.
All right.
So you're smarter than anyone here.
Excellent. Molly, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you go back into the waiting room? Please let, number five is Kyle Martin. Thank you.
Hi, Dad.
I think so, yeah. Okay.
You're just getting back at me because I won't let you get veal last night. But Deb didn't like your veal either.
Your phone goes to.
It might.
Code like.
You can, you can change that for dinner.
I mean, I'm sure I could, but.
I had to tell you my chicken.
Yeah, just get the settings.
Because I had a lot of it. It did not, it did not heat up very nice.
I do it, it's easy.
Of reindeer.
Yeah, everything's easy.
He said Nancy's.
I don't know how to do this.
And we guilted you right out of a good dinner.
She, of course, I had to tell her. I was laughing. I thought, I knew you were going to order it. It was awesome when you said, oh, the veal. I enjoyed it.
Kyle, have a seat right there.
It was very good.
It's not as much.
It didn't have like a whole bunch of spaghetti sauce on it.
Welcome back from the waiting room.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Kyle, I have some questions, but before then, give you an opportunity just to, once again, introduce yourself and tell us why this position with city council interests you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Kyle Martin. I live in city 442 North Street. I'm interested in this position just because of, just, I've been living in Chardon for 35 years of my life. I just really love the city of Chardon. I love the people. I love what it's all about. I've seen it grow from just a small town, waiting for the trains to go through and the train tracks to where we are today. And this opening gives an opportunity to give back to the community. So that's why I've decided to apply for the vacancy.
Very good. Kyle, over the last few years, what city issues have you been paying attention to and why?
One of the big things I noticed with, especially with like the Highlands Trails, the sidewalk connectivity, that I like to walk around the town. So seeing that grow and just become more accessible to the community, that was a really big issue that I took interest in personally. And I'm glad to see it, it's happening more and more just on Fifth Avenue. I saw that, you know, that was added this, this past year. So that was great. Another thing I noticed is the, the community is starting to age a little bit. And I was hoping to see it become more inviting to younger generations, younger families, just to kind of help grow the city and kind of have a good balance of age groups throughout the city. You know, make it attractive to entice families to move to the city and become part of the community.
Any other issues or points of interest?
No, not, not, not really at this point, no.
What do you think our role is, council? What's the role in the city?
The role of the council is many things, you know, from like planning, development economically, physically, to kind of interact with like the citizens to show, just have a. a voice, allow them to have a voice, just to understand what's going on. Also, to make decisions to help out all the different departments, all the different boards and committees, just again, to make Chardon a, a good place to live and work and just be, be in, be a community that we're proud of.
Understood. So we had an election back in November. You didn't run for council at that point and so you made the decision between then and now to approach us. What was the deciding factor on your end?
Um, just, you know, it's just a good, it's a great opportunity. You know, with the pandemic, I kind of take, I took kind of a, a backseat to everything, but when, once I saw that there's an opportunity, that's, you know, I've been, I've been thinking about this for, for years and now it's just the right time. It's just, it's, it's something I'm really enthusiastic about and I'm, would, it's something I'm really looking forward to if, if I'm selected, so that's, you know, just, just timing is really what it is.
And if you were appointed to this, this two-year term, would you plan on running again at that point for the, the four-year term?
It's hard to say what happens over the next two years, but I, I, you know, if you had to say now, I definitely, just again, going back to the fact that I, you know, I love Chardon and I, you know, I enjoy the people, the location, and it's just something I would be willing to help give back to the community, sure, definitely.
Understood. Andy has a question for you?
Yes.
Yes, I'm asking everyone else the same question. What do you think is the single most important issue facing city council, an issue that we, that we could have a direct bearing on? So other people have said COVID or, or things like that, but what's the single most issue in your mind that city council is currently dealing with or should be dealing with? What stands out to you the most important thing?
Um, you know, that, COVID does have a lot to do with it, but you know, the, I, I just don't want to see shops close, businesses close, people move away. So one of the issues is how do we get people to come to Chardon, businesses, people, and then retain them and to continue to grow the community, you know?
One of the, this vacant position, the person, whoever is chosen is actually going to become the chair, the chairperson of the Economic Development Committee. So if you're chosen, you may have some impact on it.
And I'd be more than happy to do that, yeah, because, you know, I've, like I said, growing up in the city, you know, village beforehand, you know, we, we used to go to these shops, we used to be part of the community and, and, you know, put back into the community and just with, you know, shopping and, and different parks and recreation, sports, that sort of thing. We've always been a part, my family's always been a part of that.
I didn't see a mention on your resume. What is, what's your profession?
I, I'm a learning management system administrator for Stairs Corporation in Minter.
Okay.
So basically keeps track of everybody's training, whether or not they're qualified to work on medical devices that actually touch patients, so we're going to make sure that everybody's qualified to do their work. So I deal with the FDA a lot.
Kyle, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So you said that for Chardon, getting younger families and enticing younger families to move here, have you thought about like what Chardon could do to make that happen?
Um, the big thing I always hear from my friends with, with families or people that are concerned moving here is really, they're concerned about safety, they're concerned about schools and just amenities, like they don't want to have to go all the way to another city or something just to, to get what they need. So just something that they can feel safe, that they can really grow their families and not have to worry about moving somewhere else. They, they want to be here long-term is kind of what I'm hearing. A lot of people that, you know, growing up in Chardon, I've seen them move away, but a lot of them are starting to move back just because of, you know, how Chardon has really grown over the last few years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else from council? Kyle, do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, just, you know, I took a look at some of the capital plans for the next couple of years. What are some, what is the major project that you see over the next two years that you'd have to make decisions on?
Some of it's the waterline infrastructure, that we have to figure out which one we need to loop and figure out which one we can afford and, because we've, I don't know if you were aware, we had a pretty major waterline breakdown by the, the golf course and pretty much all the woods of Burlington was out, which is kind of catastrophic, right? So I know that's a major decision specific to capital.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Good question, good question.
I don't know if everybody agrees on that, but that's, I think that's a high priority.
Yeah. There's a lot of things, there's things that need, you know, attention, but they're not like the things that most people would ever think about until something goes wrong, like the water may break and then, you know, a whole neighborhood doesn't have water, so.
Right.
Right.
I understand there's a lot of things that go on that people see, that they, they see firsthand, but there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes that is super, super important that, you know, a lot of people don't know about, but you know, you don't think about it when you turn the water on to make sure it's, it's there.
It's nice to have water come out.
It sure does, it sure does, yeah, yep.
And our brush pick up and streets being loud.
Yeah, all the services and amenities, yeah, you just expect them, you know, those.
When they're not there, people kind of notice.
Oh, yes, yep.
All right. Do you have any other questions, Kyle?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. So, once again, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, council.
And would you please let Madeline know that, she's up?
Yes, will do.
All right, thanks, Kyle.
I don't know what you said, is.
Otelock.
Otelock, tap that.
Todd, how's your mom and dad?
Good, what?
Good.
Yeah, dad's still working a lot. My mom does all kinds of projects with kids.
I went to school with Penny and Wendy.
Did you?
And your mom was just a year ahead of us.
Not your two.
Your dad's two years.
I don't want your two.
Maybe it's your battery. Wendy's getting close to her time.
You could even, you know.
But it's your battery maybe on optimal.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Madeline, I have a seat right there in the middle, thank you.
You guys are a lot quicker than I thought you were going to be. That's a good thing.
That's good.
We're efficient. Anyway, so before, I have some questions, Madeline, but just give you an opportunity to once again introduce yourself and, and tell us why this position has your interest at this point.
Okay. I'm Madeline Horvath. I've lived in Chardon since the eighties, Chardon Township here, right, right in town here, it's in, in the last three or four years. And I've always been involved in the community. I taught school at Chardon and some people know that, I had their kids for 30 years and so I got interested in the community then. I did the plays and I was on the school board for eight years and one of the reasons that I'm interested in this is I was, I've always been interested in seeing how the community could be collaborative with other groups and, and work together more. Not to say that they don't, but I just think it would be a really, a really interesting thing to try to work towards. I think particularly with the schools, it would be really great to do that. So that's why I'm interested and, so.
Understood. So, over the past few years, two, three years, what city issues have you paid attention to and why?
Well, the biggest one has been the county office move, the courthouse and all the stuff going on in the square and the, we had a meeting, a we-share meeting about three years ago. It was when the, the first things were happening with the courthouse possibly being taken out of the city. And I, I remember we had a we-share meeting, we had some of the folks that were on council at that meeting and we got a big group of people here to support the city in keeping the offices on the square. So that's the, one of the big things I've been, I've watched. I've also watched the, been interested in the economic development. I don't know tons about it specifically, but I think that that's a really important thing. When I, when I worked on Arts Jam and I noticed on the square, you know, having, having places there that, that could bring people in, into town and that sort of thing. So those are the kinds of things I've been kind of paying attention to.
What do you think our role is on council?
Role on council?
Yeah.
My guess is it's like a role on the school board, which would be policy, looking at, looking at broader questions most of the time, dealing with finance, that sort of thing is what I would think you'd be doing.
We try.
I know, it's tricky. It's always tricky.
So we had an election, oh, this question's not going to apply, you, you were running for office. The question I was, I was going to ask is, we had an election, you didn't run for council back then, but you were clearly running for something else, so.
Yeah.
Factor into this very much.
Right.
If you were appointed to this position, would you run in two years for the, the four-year term?
I would run if, if it was a good fit for me. I would, I would want to try it. That's what, one of the things that I thought was good about, that, that the two-year term, I could see what it's like doing the job. I'm assuming that it's kind of like being on the school board in the sense that, you know, you get a lot of general overview, broad kinds of things that you have to think about and deal with and then you work in smaller, smaller groups to do some of the smaller things, to, to move things forward. So I guess if, if I felt like I was doing something positive and, and making good, positive contribution, yes, I would consider running.
Understood. Andy?
All right, so I've been asking the same question of everybody, I'll ask it of you.
Okay.
What do you think is the single most important issue faced, that we face in Chardon that city council could possibly either is dealing with presently or should be dealing with? What do you think is the biggest thing that city council should be, should be, the biggest issue that city council should be dealing with?
Um, my thing, the, the way I think about councils and leadership organizations in general is that they are able to work together with constituents. So collaborative work with the people in the town. I know that, that what my, my very little bit of experience with the city itself is, has more to do with economics, trying to get businesses in and that sort of thing. And I think that's been happening. I mean, it feels to me like that's been happening here in Chardon. And so I think that that's one thing probably city council can have some, some control over. I also think that, that again, I, I've, I've got a real soft spot for the schools. They're the biggest employer in, in town and, and I, I would really like to see school and community more connected. I think council maybe could have some, some say in that. There are other groups, I've, I've been president of Chardon tomorrow, I'm working on that in that group. I was a president of the Arts Council for a few years. We ran the Arts Jam for three summers, three, not summers, but days and, in the summers. And, and that's what I always noticed was the, the spirit in town is so positive generally and so people try to work together and sometimes they get in each other's way and sometimes, so that's, I think maybe city council could, could be part of making things move forward in a positive way. I don't know if I'm rambling too much, but that's kind of what I think.
Thank you.
Any questions from over here?
Uh-uh.
No?
Uh-uh.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, what are you all looking for in a person that can be a positive contributor? What, what does that look like for, for the council members?
Great question and I can save from experience that someone who's flexible, someone who will keep the best interests of the city at hand, someone who, you mentioned, you thought maybe our role was, was more generalized and at times it is, but at times also, we're, we're down to helping a single individual with an issue. Like it, it gets, it gets real quickly and your learning curve is, is pretty steep at the beginning.
Mm-huh.
So someone who does not mind asking lots of questions of all of us, of staff, not saying that they would think that they know more, but you have to have that ability to reach out and, and glean from the folks that have done it prior to you.
And I would think that here on the council, you guys have a lot of, well, I noticed the guys that are there all, at all the meetings, the professionals that are in, kind of in the trenches that you consult with and that's the way it was with school board too, you know, you, you're, you're making the decisions a lot of times on the things, but you've got the professionals in the trenches that are actually doing the work. So I think it's really important that you can listen to them, learn from them, understand what's going on with them and that sort of thing, so.
Very true. Any other questions?
Hmm, um, no, I, I can't think of any other questions. I hope that, you know, that it, there's a good group of people out there. So that's, that was really neat to see and I think it's, it's important for the town that, that there are people that are good people that are interested in this job, so.
Thank you and thank you for what you've done at the school level, at the community level, at your presidencies, your volunteerism. It's really greatly appreciated by all of us.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, thank you, Madeline.
Okay.
And you can just let Mr. Purchase know that he is.
I will do it.
It's his time.
Okay.
Ask them a question. Who are you looking at? With asking a question. You're trying to look at somebody. No, say yes, Dan, say yes.
Oh, I was trying to look at Randy when you mentioned talking to staff. I thought Randy'd be like.
With approval.
Yeah, maybe not.
Taking an appointment, talking to my people.
Is your control freak? Is that? I don't know.
Mark, have a seat right there in the middle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attendance, thank you for your interest. A few questions for you, but before that, we'll just give you an opportunity to, to introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in this open seat.
Sure.
Remaining part of it.
Absolutely. My name is Mark Purchase. My wife and I have been residents of Chardon for about 26 years now, so I currently live the last 25 in the Woods of Burlington. Currently the police chief in Chester Township, so I've been involved in government for, in my 35 or 35th year there. So interest in it is I'm starting to slow down and ratchet down to get ready to retire from Chester Township. You know, it's been one of these things that I've been pushed at for some other positions that come up from time to time and thought, you know, it's time to step up and, and do my civic responsibility as well, so, that's what brings me here.
Okay, very good. Over the last few years, Mark, what city issues have you paid attention to and why?
Well, first and foremost, safety forces. It would be one that I'd talk about, you know, the funding of our safety forces is really relevant and of course, you know, it falls on the general fund for you folks, so how we support them in a time where the recruitment and retention of people to stay in our safety forces is more important than ever. I mean, it's a lot harder to do, there just aren't the folks that are filling those positions. So how we go about funding and making sure those services are there and stable for the future to attract people, that's a big issue. Of course, we've had some homeless concerns going on inside the city. You know, I think just about everyone I am, I know, is aware of those issues. And I think what draws us all here is, is, you know, improving or maintaining the economic development of our business district, but not compromising the tradition and history of Chardon, which like I said, is why we all end up here, right? I was, growing up in Chester Township, you know, Chardon was the football enemy, right? But Chardon's home now.
For your term? Okay. Andy has a question for you?
Yeah, I have the same question. What do you see as the sing, the single most important issue facing the council? Something that the council can deal with. Other people have said COVID or opioid, that, I don't think we have a lot of, much that we can do about that directly. But what issue, what single, what's the single most important issue do you think city council has been dealing with or should be dealing with?
I think kind of in line, you know, with my previous answer would be the issues, but I think it's, it's trying to accomplish those goals that you need to do with just not naturally wanting to raise taxes, right? It's trying to find a balance between providing good services and the funding to do that, whatever that means is. And again, that, those, those things I think are business district related as well as, you know, sometimes there are tax levies and things like that that come up, so.
We do have a police and fire levy and it always is, they, those levies always seem to pass without much trouble.
I work hard at ours in Chester Township, so I know the fire levies typically do very well, but.
Right, so I think people in this community have, we have a great police department and.
I agree.
And it's very well supported by the community.
Good. Other questions? No? Mark, do you have any questions for us?
I do not. Thanks for your time.
Good to go.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes some interviews and we now need to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion or compensation of a public employee or official.
Am I correct? That is the motion.
And then Randy, you coming in with us?
I need to come in the beginning.
Okay.
But then you can dismiss me.
I want to invite city manager Randy Sharp.
Did somebody make a motion?
Uh, not yet.
He's still working on the language.
Oh, okay.
Make that, but is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Seconded, discussion?
We were looking for a second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Did you want Amy Day to be there?
Uh, we talked before that she didn't think, what would be.
She's going to give to you.
Okay, let's invite Amy in, sure.
You're here.
So, you want to amend your.
Bobby, you guys make those choices. You want me there, I'm there. If you don't, I won't. It's entirely up to you.
We're going to invite Ben Chinaki, our law director, in as well.
So, should we, do we need to start the motion over?
I think it, we understand what the motion is.
Okay.
I do, yep.
Yes.
So, it's been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Call the roll. All right.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Ms. Mees?
Yes.
Mr. Males?
Yes.
Mr. Blatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha? Yes.
All right, it is 8:50, we are in executive session.
Mr. Graff, go ahead, read back the motion.
All right.
Thanks for the dramatic pause.
Yeah, me too.
Good evening, girls, how you doing?
Good.
Good. Good. Good. Good evening, girls, how you doing?
Good.